Like to call and order the regular meeting of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury for Thursday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. If you would, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. Also, if there is an item on tonight's agenda that you need to speak on, ask that you fill out a blue slip that you'll find there at the front of the room. Once you get it filled out, you'll hand it to anyone here at the staff desk. If you would, we're gonna have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Andrew Pott. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening, we pause to give you thanks and praise for the many blessings that you've given us. We ask your blessing upon everyone here this evening, and upon this parish, and upon our nation and our leaders, that your Holy Spirit guide them to make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Also, Father, we ask a special blessing this evening on two of our Juars that are retiring, that you watch over them and bless their families of Mr. Bream and Mr. Richard. And let us remember our deceased and disabled veterans, and those in the military serving around the world, that God's protective hand be upon them. We ask all of these favors in your son's name, Jesus Christ our Lord and Redeemer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Abshire.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pott.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Barti.
Here.
Vice President Bream.
Here.
Mr. Burley.
Here.
Mr. Guillory.
Here.
Mr. Hayes was unable to attend. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantell.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Staley.
Here.
Mr. Tremani.
Here.
And President Landry.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good. Item ones of five forty-five, we'll come back to that. Had a little computer problem there. Two A, presentations of plaques of the two thousand and twenty-three president and vice president. I'm not sure how we're doing it, Mr. Bream.
I don't know.
There we go.
Looking plaque.
Whatever Kay says.
No, absolutely.
Guess we'll take a picture.
That's pretty, that's nice.
Oh, thank you. We're doing it that way.
Thank you for your, thank you for your service. As President, leading the jury.
That JP's never happy.
There you go. Act like you've been here before.
Be small.
I know.
That's as good as it's gonna get.
That's pretty service.
Thank you.
Them dudes ain't even got a minute.
That will come off.
Yeah.
That will come off.
Think God wanted a duck, though.
I think it's an eagle.
Yeah, I know.
Is it?
I usually get it from my birdie.
Yeah.
You can get something different.
Nice plaques.
Chris, I wanna say something.
Mr. Gary.
Chris, I just, Mr. Landry, I just wanna say that this is one of the best years that I've seen as a president, as we went through the whole year. You made it very interesting. You had, you did what you had to do. You broke it, made it, made the meetings good. But this is one of the best presidents that I've served with in all these years. You made the meetings well.
Thank you, Mr. Gary, 'cause I take that as a compa, 'cause Mr. Gary has been president himself, so.
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm telling you, you really had it on fire this year. You, you really did well.
Thank you. Mr. Andrew Pott.
I wanna echo those sentiments. You did a very good job, and we've had some issues of conversation. You let us, allow us to express our opinions on whatnot. You've kept things lighthearted, but you've done an outstanding job. And it's a reflection on the whole jury, the way you conducted meetings. So, good job.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pott. Mr. Markantell. Well, I'll tell you how good he is. I got him all the way to the Sabine River west of Starks. I thought I was in Texas for a minute. On an issue, so he's done a great job. He, he's here lately, he's helped me out a lot due to his many years and expertise on the jury. He's helped me in a lot of areas, and I deeply appreciate that.
You're welcome. It's an honor.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I mean, it was a great year, and I really enjoyed President Landry. I know he and I went on a, a visit to, deep into Moss Bluff, and we had a great time out there, meeting with a few people, and he helped me out a lot. So, I wanna thank you, say thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Mr. Richard.
I wanna thank you, Mr. President, but I wanna thank the whole board. I'm gonna be leaving. I'm retiring. I'll make my speech now.
Look, you gotta stay to the end.
Got to get busy. But thank you. I have to say, this has been the best board I've ever sat on. I've been in the office for twenty-eight years. I went through five elections. I had opposition in every one of them, won every one of them. But this has been the board that I've been more than happy to sit on with everyone, respect, just the, just friends that became family. I wanna thank the administration. Awesome job. Having gone through COVID, two hurricanes, and a flood, we did pretty good. This parish ought to be well, well, has been well represented. I wanna thank Brian, Dane, Alberto, Sam, Alan, Wes, Kelly, Darryl.
You're gonna miss somebody. Everybody, you're gonna miss somebody.
But I got, I have a daughter that's with me tonight. She's been my campaign manager for all five of them, and she was able to be with me. I have another daughter and my wife there. Under the weather, they couldn't be here, but I wanna thank her. I wanna thank the good Lord for allowing me to serve the twenty-eight years. And I wanna thank one person that's been with me every twenty-four to twenty-five years of my twenty-eight years, and that's Ms. Jessica Booth. I appreciate you so much. You've been by my side. You've answered all my questions. You've helped me a lot through my years, and I wanna thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Chris, can I, how does Mr. Richard get retirement after one term?
His mother twenty-four.
He had a lot of years before that. Justice of the peace. Mr. Andrew Pott.
Well, to, to Mr. Richard, I thought we were gonna catch you when we get your presentation, but as we're, if, if I may, you know, we're, we're gonna miss you. I've heard good things about Mr. Quinn coming on, but I, I've told you many times when we were, that we're gonna miss you. You're a man of your word. You're a man of honor. You're a man of character. And elected officials, we, we need more of that, and the people to see, but you've represented your district very well. And for one final time, we're gonna miss you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Appreciate it. Thank Darby Quinn.
You too, guy.
We're just gonna go ahead and move to two B, 'cause that's really, that's really where we are anyway. Two B, one, Mr. Ashton Richard, Police Juror District One, for four years of service. If you would, just meet me at the podium.
It's a certificate of appreciation presented by the Calhoun Parish Police Jury on this fourteenth day of December, two thousand and twenty-three, to Ashton Richard, Police Juror District One, in honor and appreciation of four years of exemplary and dedicated service to the citizens of Calhoun Parish. Congratulations and best luck in the future.
Y'all gonna make another speech? Thank y'all all again.
Gonna have to be careful where you place these things. Presented to God Bream in recognition of eighteen years of dedicated service as a member of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury, presented this fourteenth day of December, two thousand and twenty-three, and it's got our motto, service vision and leadership, and of course, on the other side's the police jury logo, so.
Thank you, sir. Absolutely. Congratulations.
So, real quickly, I mean, I, I thought about this moment for a long time, and figured I'd thought about what I was gonna say. Yeah, those are my. You did that on purpose, Bill. And Staley knows it, too. Talking about all my crunching during the meetings, you know.
I thought you were talking about, when you asked what the meeting, the meaning of substantially complete. What substantially complete means. That's my favorite part.
You know, there's moments, there's moments and a lot of memories that I, that I can share, and I've thought about it many, many times. And, and, you know, I just think about what hap, what's transpired over the last eighteen years, and who I've served with. And, I mean, Mark McBerry was here, Jessica was a kid, Jennifer, I mean, everybody, you know, Brian was in his early forties. It's just, it's crazy. I don't know, I don't know really what to say. I just, it's just been an honor. I know, I know in two thousand and five, when I decided to run for this seat, I, I knew it was something that, that God called me to do. And, and I know he placed me in this position. I've honored that from, from day one, and I, and I've worked. I, you know, it's just been, it's just been a great experience. I'll never forget it. I'm gonna miss all you guys. There's so many people to thank. I mean, y'all know who you are. I just, if I start doing names, I'm, I'm gonna leave somebody else. I'm not gonna do that, but. Lot of good friends, lot of good memories, and I just, you know, I think that the parish is in good hands with, with you guys, and, and the staff, for sure. I mean, I don't know, I could just go on and on talking about it, but that's why I didn't plan anything, because, anyway, but I'm gonna miss you guys. Yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you, God.
Mr. President, I'm not gonna wait to be called on, since you guys are sitting. I'm just gonna go ahead and say something.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Bream, thank you for being my sidecar buddy during my term. We had a hell of a year, but it was a lot of fun, and I appreciate everything that you've done, that you did for me during my term as president. And I appreciate all the guidance you've given me over my six years, and I look forward to continue to confide in you for things that we need. Our districts adjoin, so we have the same issues. So, I appreciate you. And President Landry, thank you. Mr. Guillory kind of insulted the rest of us on the jury when he's, that have served as president. Just kidding.
I don't think, he didn't mean to.
We'll call it a tie. How's that? But no, you've been a great leader, and we appreciate everything you've done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And I'd just like to say about Mr. Richard, it was an honor to, of course, I just met you here on the police jury, so we've only known each other four years, but it, it's definitely been an honor to serve with you, and you've represented the Moss Bluff area very, very well. And hopefully, don't be a stranger. We do, I still wanna, we've gotta see you somewhere.
Yeah, come fill out a blue card or something.
Yeah, fill out. Yeah, just for anything, it, it's fine. And Mr. Bream, it's definitely been an honor as well, serving with you for the last eighteen years. And, and, you know, our districts also join each other, and it's good to have somebody, you know, you're both representing South Lake Charles, that, that, well, number one, you get along with, and, and that has the same vision, and it just, not that we always agreed, but, but, you know, that's good. You don't wanna always agree. You wanna, you wanna hear the other guys, what he has to, to say and think about things. And doing that, we get more done, and, and better things. And, and it's a long list. I mean, probably the biggest, I think, accomplishment that I'm sure you're proud of, and I know I'm proud of, is, is the beginning of getting water to South, to, to South Lake Charles, South Ward Three out there over the years. I mean, there's been a lot of other things, but, but, you know, that one sticks out. That was, that was a big one. But it's definitely been an honor to serve with you, and we definitely gonna miss you without a doubt. And, you know, heck, we've become friends. I mean, we do business together. He, you, you know, we buy from each other, and, and it's been a good relationship. And I think, what I'm hoping, the last thing I, I wanna do for you, is before we leave tonight, and this is really for Paula, for, for guys, well, he's got a wonderful wife, sweetest lady in the world. And we're gonna take up a collection tonight, and so he's gonna buy him some hair nades when he retires. He promised that at the beginning of the year, he's gonna get them. He still hadn't gotten them. So, I'm thinking, if we pitch in a hundred bucks a piece, you'd be well on your way. Although I know you can afford them. That's why I'm wondering, why won't the guy buy hair nades? Just buy hair nades. I've got them. It's nothing to be ashamed of. We're getting old. It's okay. Poor Paula.
Some things I may not wanna hear.
Well, that's true. They have an off button. You can turn them off.
Since you're picking up that hundred for him, I'm starting to helluva.
I'm gonna miss the, of course, this probably won't stop, but I'll, I'll give you a shout every now and then, the conversations. The, the, my first eight years were, I'm not gonna say they were boring. We had some heated, some hot topics, and we really all had to come together and, 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 and really, really make some, some tough decisions. And, you know, we had to figure out how to spend the money that we, we were, we were getting from the, the federal government and after the storms. I mean, we, we had some, we had some big boy stuff to do, and big girl. And, you know, the best thing about you is that you would always encourage me to walk down instead of run down, you know, and, and sometimes not even just saying it, just, but, but the way you talked slowed me down and, and got me to think, and almost like a father-like figure. And I, I appreciate you for that. And from here on out, man, as long as I'm here, every time I see a fish treat, man, I'm gonna think about you. Thank you, sir. Love you much.
Thank you, Joe.
So, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Okay, it's, well, a little after five forty-five. We'll go back to number one. Hold a public hearing at five forty-five PM, ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said property should not be condemned. One A, ten twenty-nine Parish Road in Moss Bluff. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one A, ten twenty-nine Parish Road in Moss Bluff? I got a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Markantell. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. One B, eleven fifty-eight Bellfield Road, Moss Bluff. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one B, eleven fifty-eight Bellfield Road, Moss Bluff? Got a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Markantell, to condemn and remove in thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. One C, seventy-five thirty-one Flounder Drive, Lake Charles. Mr. Keith Washington, if you would. Mr. Washington, come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Keith Washington. I live presently at fifty twenty-four Monarch, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. I believe the property is seventy-four thirty-one Flounder.
This address is seventy-five thirty-one.
Seventy-five thirty-one Flounder.
Yes, sir.
I purchased the property as a, a investment property. Right after the hurricane, I was down here working. I had, I had, the guy that does the inspections in that area, we had a little thing going before about the van in the yard and the property not being kept up. So, what I did was I boarded the property up. I, I removed the van from the property. What I've had just recently, what, so he closed the case. The neighbors was complaining about the property, which I understand. You understand, so I saw. So, just recently, what I've had is, right here, what you see is, I had the property totally cleaned. I cleaned it myself from, from one end to the other. I've had a squatter standing in the property. I live in Baton Rouge. I have a guy that I pay every other week to do the, do the yard. Well, he, he the one that brought it to my attention. He said, I think somebody's standing in your property. Well, I told him to stay from over there, 'cause I didn't want a confrontation between him. So, I, I've drove out here several times. This is probably my third time out here since. I, I never caught the guy in the property. The guy busted all the windows out the van, 'cause I did bring the van back over there. I put the van in the neighbor's yard to keep down confusion. Well, when the neighbor got tired of it being in his yard, I brought it back over there. Since then, I've sold the van to the people that scrap cars. What I plan on doing is just demoing the property. I haven't, the guy hasn't been out there to do the yard in about a month's time, or maybe a little over a month, because I told him to stay away from the property, because someone, a squatter is standing in there. I haven't caught up with whoever it is. I'm just gonna demo the property, and that should, that should solve the problem.
If you would, Mr. Washington, the, the issue, and, and what you're here tonight for really is to tell the jury of why the property should not be condemned. So, understand you got issues with a squatter and all of that, but you need to tell us why we should not condemn it.
I boarded the property up. I live in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Someone removed the boards off the window, and they're standing in the property. I, I can't prove this, because I haven't, I don't know the person personally. I've came out here several times to try to catch the person in the property. I'm, what I'm looking to do is, when I get my income tax, I, I mean, it's gonna take, I done checked with some companies out this way to try to get the property removed from the, try to get the trailer removed from the property. I've heard of three thousand dollars. I, I can't afford that until maybe tax time, when I get my taxes. I just decided to maybe just demo the property. One of the guys that, one of the movers that I talked to suggested just demo the property. So, that's, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna demo the property, and that should, 'cause I left, I left work early today to be here.
Okay, hold on just a minute.
I can't afford to keep.
Hold on, Mr. Washington, I think we have some questions. Mr. Bream.
So, you just kinda answered half my question on what your plan is.
Yes, sir.
So, but on tonight's agenda, it's thirty days, you know, condemn and remove in thirty days.
Yes, sir.
Can you get it done in thirty days?
No, sir. I would need more time. If you can give me three to four months, 'cause I, I don't know, I haven't filed my taxes. I don't know when I'm gonna receive them, but I'm gonna do this with my tax money. I don't, I have a family at home. I don't have extra money to just all of a sudden tear a property down.
Yeah.
I work full-time in Baton Rouge, so I don't have the time. I can do the work, but I don't have the time to come out here and do the work. I would have to pay someone.
How long has this property been like that, Bill?
The property was boarded up, and the guy cuts the grass every other week. I pay him sixty dollars every other week to cut the grass.
So, how long's it been like that?
I bought the property after the hurricane. I was, I, I come down here to work after the hurricane. After the two hurricanes hit, back to back, I, I stayed out here for maybe a year. I purchased the property. I, I started to remodel the property when I was local, but when I had to go back home to work, I wasn't here to, to do any more work on the property. I come down and I check on the property, maybe every other month. I mean, I, I don't come down that often, so because, because, the guy's a friend of mine that cuts the grass. He would kinda keep me up on what's going on with the property.
So, so suggestion, and I know that financially, you may not be able to do it, but if you can get the mobile home off the property, then you can maintain the property.
Well, that's, that's what I, that's what I would like to do.
I don't know that anybody on the jury's gonna give you four months. I don't, I don't have a clue.
I can only do it when I receive my income tax. I don't have the money to, to pay three thousand dollars to remove a trailer house. I was just, I, I figured it'd be a cheaper route to demo the property.
Okay. If I just may, I mean, the process, if the, if we condemn the property, the, the staff is gonna send it out for bid. The cheapest bidder is gonna clean up the property. There will be a tax, you know, they'll send him a bill, and then if he doesn't pay the bill, we'll end up with a tax lien, which won't be until next year's taxes. So, just built into the deal, it's gonna be a competitive bid, and he's gonna have time to pay for it. Just, I'll just throw that out there.
Excuse me. How much money are we talking? We're talking ten, twenty thousand dollars. How much money are we talking? We're talking ten, twenty thousand dollars. I can't afford that.
I couldn't comment on that, Mr. Washington. Hold on, Mr. Washington. All right, do we have any other questions by the jurors? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Washington. All right, well, we don't, we don't have a motion.
I guess I do have a.
Mr. Andrew Pott.
Mr. Crane, any, any idea of what that normally, the expense runs to demolish a trailer like that? What's that, ballpark figure?
Well, I don't think it's been anywhere near ten thousand or anything like that.
Is it around three to five thousand?
Yeah, about three to five.
Okay, so it sounds like when this process and when he gets his tax returns, he would be able to settle up and take, take things into account. So it's a win-win, really. We get the property demolished, and then he gets to build it later on and could pay for it.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend letting it go.
No.
I mean, it's an unsafe property. And what's, he just said it. I mean, people are trying to get in there and vagrants are. And it's just, that's what these types of properties attract. And we're just trying to get rid of them.
Understood. Thank you.
He would have time to obviously pay it.
Good.
Mr. Abshar.
Mr. Crane, when I'm, when I ask this, am I correct? Whatever expense he incurs to demolish will not be due until he sells the property? I mean, it would be due, but.
What's that?
When the taxes come up.
The taxes.
Yeah, if we file a lien on the property, next year's taxes, when they come up, then that's when he'll, he'll be sent a tax notice. And then he'll have to pay, and they won't let him pay his property taxes and he pays lien off. So that's, that's what happens.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Barris.
So, thank you. Seems like to me you would just clean it up and sell it, and then take, take your cleanup fee out of that. I mean, it's not like he's out of options. I mean, we got, we can't, we can't wait that long.
Okay, you can't speak from the audience, Mr. Washington.
Make a motion to condemn and remove in thirty days.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Brain to condemn and remove in thirty days, and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Well, look, you can speak to Mr. Robinson, and he'll fill you in on what's happening. Mr. Robinson, would you speak to Mr. Washington and inform him on what's going on? 1D, 9620 Simon La Blue Road in Lake Charles. We do have a speaker, Mr. Kenneth Rosfield, Rossfield. If you would, sir, come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
Kenneth Rossfield, 9620 Simon La Blue. I haven't been living on the property, but I stay next door sometimes, kind of homeless now because of the house. I plan on tearing it down and getting it all rid of, but I have another trailer coming onto the property in front of that trailer. And all my belongings and everything were in that trailer, as you see. Everything I have is in the trailer. I have no storage for it. And I wanted to rebuild and fix, cut, cut that end room off, the one the tree fell on. But I don't know if I'm even able to do it now. As far as the condemnation, I just need a little bit more time to, I'd like to fix it, but I don't know if y'all will let me.
Any jurors have any questions? Mr. Barris.
Mr. Crane, when do we start visiting with this gentleman about this initially?
Mr. Robinson's out speaking with the other gentleman. I'm not real sure, but before we even put it on this agenda, we normally are sending out some sort of pre-courtesy letters, you know, for any kind of response to these property owners. And so it's, it's, you know, three to four months ahead of time.
I've been cleaning up the property around it. They said to get, you know, take care of the front yard. And I've been working on it pretty much three to five days a week. And I've got a lot done. I just, they gave me a five-day notice on the property cleanup. And I, I just need a little bit more time. So I'm doing it all by myself.
Mr. Stelly. Are you finished?
I am.
Your plan is to remove your personal belongings out of there?
Well, I have another trailer I'm supposed to put in front of it.
When?
And we're waiting on FEMA to put the other trailer in. So when I get the trailer moved, I can put all my property into my new trailer.
Wes, can you put another trailer in front of this one before this one's removed?
I'm not sure, sir. I'd have to look at the property and see how much room. I don't have a sight plane or anything that. I, you know, where this sits on the property.
But how much, if your plan is to remove your personal belongings out of there, how much time do you need for that? And do you have a place to put, put them?
That's why I was waiting on the other trailer. I don't have a place to put them all.
Do you have a date from FEMA?
No, sir. It's, they're, they're talking to my mom about it, and they tell me I have to call back. So I'm waiting on an answer. For the last two weeks, I've been trying to call and get ahold of them.
You finished, Mr. Stelly? Mr. Brain.
So when you, when you first got up there, did you say that you were living in this?
No, sir, no.
What'd you say about being homeless?
Because of this, I am pretty much homeless. I didn't get any kind of assistance or anything to get it home. That's why I was wanting to rebuild it. But now, since I got another trailer coming, I'll be able to move that one into the new trailer, so I won't have to keep it. I'll be able to tear it down once I get my other trailer in. But I don't have anywhere to put my stuff in. Storage, you lose a lot. I'd have to build something or.
I mean, is it?
Sir?
Does it leak?
No, not at all. It's just the back room. See, that looks like a mess. But the back room in the back was smashed by a tree, and I was gonna cut it off and just wall it up, cut that bedroom completely off, that in the back. And that doesn't even leak, surprisingly.
Yeah, so if he does any of that kind of stuff, Wes, he needs permits and all that?
Right, right.
Yes, Mr. Brain, he would need permits for all that, but this is a manufactured home, and I've said this before. If he is structurally changing that, that manufactured home, it would have to go through the state fire marshal's office for approval. I'm not sure if they would approve that. He would have to show how it's gonna meet the HUD code and all that.
Really, if I had time just to say I was gonna jack it up and then save it for a month or two, until I can get the trailer, and I'll have time to move my stuff out. And then we can carry on and tear it down.
Mr. Barris.
Mr. Rossfield, so for three, approximately three months, you've known that there was a possibility that condemnation was gonna be handed down, okay?
Well, that was probably a couple of months ago. I noticed the note said something about the condemnation. But previous, I've been working on the yard, trying to clean everything up around it, and didn't concentrate on the trailer because I didn't know this extent.
We had multiple violations, I'm sorry.
Did we ever pick up the phone and call somebody and say, hey, can someone walk me through what this letter means? Or you just waited till it got to this point? Condemnation means, condemnation. We want, we want it gone, and you've had three months to kind of process this.
I thought it pretty much meant, I mean, the letters I get are pretty much on my property. I didn't notice that it meant the trailer had to go. I've been moving vehicles and campers and stuff around. I've done a lot for one person. I know it needs to go.
Yeah, Mr. Gary.
Can I ask, Mr. Rossfield, how long have you been dealing with FEMA on this issue?
FEMA doesn't give me anything. FEMA hasn't given me anything.
About how long have you been in contact with them, and they told you that they was gonna give you a trailer and everything?
They aren't giving me the trailer. My mother's giving me the trailer. They're giving my mother a trailer. The, what is that called?
Restore.
Restore LA? Or Restore 21? They're gonna give my mother a trailer, and hers is fixable. So I was just gonna put it from one property to the next, straight across onto my property.
Probably not.
We go thirty days, it'll be removed.
I had a feeling you were gonna say that.
We have these guys, Mr. President, we have these guys that go out there and doing this work and trying to get these places cleaned up. And then we have them going back three and four and five times, which we shouldn't have to do. Once they get a letter, I think something should be done immediately. They give them plenty of time. They try to work with everybody.
I have been doing, I have been working on the property.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a motion by, right now, by Mr. Richard to condemn and remove in thirty days. And we had a second by Mr. Barris. Okay, is there any further discussion from the jury? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Rossfield, you could also, if you need further explanation, you could get with Mr. Robinson, and he will fill you in on what's gonna happen next. 1E, 3550 Pine Beetle Lane in Sulphur. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1E, 3550 Pine Beetle Lane in Sulphur?
Move to condemn and remove in thirty days.
I got a motion by Mr. Burley to condemn and remove in thirty days, and a second by Mr. Andrew Pott. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1F, 2620 May Street in Westlake. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1F, 2620 May Street in Westlake? Got a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Markantel to condemn and remove in thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1G, 3583 Ash Drive in Sulphur. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1G, 3583 Ash Drive in Sulphur? Got a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Stelly, to condemn and remove in thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1H, 3505 Palm Drive in Sulphur. Is there anyone here to speak on 1H, 3505 Palm Drive in Sulphur?
Remove in thirty days.
Is he filling out a blue slip back there? Okay. I got a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Andrew Pott, to condemn and remove in thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1I, 3518 Palm Drive in Sulphur. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1I, 3518 Palm Drive in Sulphur? Got a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Markantel, to condemn and remove in thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3A, approved applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane, his staff recommends that two new and eight renewal applications be approved. Got a motion by Mr. Abshar, second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3B, adopting ordinance approving the following rezoning application of 212 Cassie Lane and Ward 6 to rezone from mixed residential and agricultural to manufactured home park to allow a manufactured home park. I got a motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Burley to deny the application. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on that item? Okay, any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3C, adopting ordinance approving the following rezoning application. 2300 Mountville Street in Ward 4 to rezone from single-family residential to agriculture to allow commercial development. Is that correct? We're rezoning from single-family to agriculture to allow commercial?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Reception facility.
Got a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Tremonti. And what was, what was your motion, Mr. Barris?
Move to approve rezoning with only condition number one.
Okay, so the, the motion was to only, is to approve the rezoning, but with only condition number one, and not two, and not three?
Only number one.
Only number one. Okay, so that's the motion, and we had a second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3D, adopting ordinance amending chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to various sections. Got a motion by Mr. Brain, second by Mr. Markantel. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3E, adopt ordinances, rescinding ordinances adopted by the police jury with respect to adjudicated properties. I have a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3F, adopt an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 7738, which ordered demolition of one house and one accessory building located at 1975 Walker Road in Carls. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated November 16, 2023. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4B, adopt the resolution approving the police jury operational policies manual as amended. Got a motion by Mr. Abshar, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4C, adopting ordinance approving the relocation of precinct number 602, which is currently located at 102 North Pine Street in Dequincy, from the former location at 102 West Harrison Street in Dequincy. Got a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4D, adopting ordinance approving the relocation of precincts number 760 and 761 to 2815 Foreman Road in Vinton, from the former location at 1603 Grace Avenue in Vinton. I got, well, I don't.
No move.
Got a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Andrew Pott. Is there any discussion? Any, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4E, adopt a resolution approving a call by Recreation District Number 1 of Ward 3 of Calcasieu for an election to be held on Saturday, April 27, 2024, to incur debt and issue bonds for a period not to exceed fifteen years. I have a motion by Mr. Smith, the second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion?
Just, just a question.
Mr. Andrew Pott.
Always like to see these types of items on the agenda, but just an overview, what, what all is included? Can someone share what the thirty million dollars involves? Briefly, I'm just.
Good evening. Yes, we're looking to.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Kip Tahada, 5776 Waterside Drive.
And your position with, with the district.
Exesential Director for War 3 Recreation. Some of the projects that we're looking to, to do is actually do an indoor swimming pool in South Lake Charles, like we have right now currently at 3210 Powers Center Parkway. We're looking to add another outdoor pool north of town and looking to address some of the needs as far as turfing some of the fields, upgrade Cougar Stadium, which we currently oversee, currently renovate Alvin Dark Stadium, and just do some improvements to these different parks and recreation throughout War 3, which we are currently oversee.
Any additional new fields, by chance?
No, sir, no.
Anyway, I, I commend War 3. This is good stuff. I like to hear that.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pott. Thank you. Mr. Gary.
Kip, I was just asking, you said you was gonna put a new pool north, so the one at Foreman Reynard is not gonna be?
Yes, we will be renovating that and actually we have to demo it and bring it back up. And so hopefully we can demo it possibly at the beginning, probably in April this year. Of course, we're working with FEMA with that project, but we will be rebuilding Foreman Reynard back.
Good, I'd like to see you do that one first.
Mr. Brain? Vice President Brain.
Kip, thank you for, for all you did out there. I've been liaisoned that, that.
Kip, thank you for all you do out there. I've been liaison of that district for a long time. Thank you. The board has been great. You've been great. Just thank you for what you do.
And can I publicly say just thank you, Mr. Guy, from what you have done with your leadership and then dealing with Ralph and Sally, and I've been on many calls that you with yourself, but thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We're gonna give you an extra award for dealing with Ralph. Mr. Tremonti?
Sir, Mr. Kip, thank you, sir. Um, what's going on with the Cougar Stadium? Are we gonna turf that?
Yes, that would be one of the projects, is we're looking to turf Cougar Stadium and renovate the old visitor's side as far as the bleachers, but yes, we're looking to turf Cougar Stadium.
Is that, is Alvin Dark Stadium the same, you're gonna turf it?
Well, it's already tamed.
It's already tamed.
So we just have to go back in and actually we have to demo those bleachers, uh, and actually we should be getting a structural engineer report probably like next week to see if we have to tear it down and bring it back up.
Is that something St. Louis will use again, Cougar Stadium, now that it's turfed, or will be?
I would think, I don't wanna answer for them, but I would think once we turf it and do the upgrades, I think they will be back.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Long time coming.
There any questions for any of the other jurors? Thank you, Mr. Tahada. Okay, we had a motion and a second, no further discussion, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Four F, adopt resolutions in support of Mr. Mike Smith and Mr. Eddie Lewis, Jr. and their candidates for Member-at-Large on the Police Jury Association of Louisiana Executive Board. Uh, got a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Five A, adopt a resolution approving a contract for the Calcasieu Parish overlays Phase One A project. Got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Five B, adopt a resolution approving an entity-state agreement for the LA thirty-ninety-two Goche Road at Lake Street roundabout project. Got a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Been waiting a while on that one, haven't we, Mr. Brain? Five C, adopt a resolution renaming the dead-end segment of Niblet's Bluff Road to Gum Slue Road. Got a motion by Mr. Barris, a second by Mr. Markentale. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Mr. Barris?
Real quick, I don't know if folks from that over, over in that area know Mr. Don McKay. Uh, he's an artist, local area artist, and he would do his artwork on wood logs and such out of Sabine River. And, uh, his family lives out that way and actually called Mr. Don. I said, Mr. Don, I don't wanna offend anybody out there. We gotta rename this little road. It's not a big old road, but we got, we need a name. And, uh, he said, well, let me think about it for a few days, and boy, he did. And he got back with me and he said, Gum Slue Road. And he told me the story and, you know, hey, so it's gonna mean something, you know? It's not just, we didn't just throw a dart at the, at the wall and come up with something. So thank you to Mr. Don McKay. I yield back.
Thank you for explaining it, because that's what I was thinking. Where'd that come from?
In the essence of time, we'll ask for the story later.
Yeah, you give us the details. All right, any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Five D, adopt a resolution approving the following items related to Water Works District Number Eight of Wards Three and Eight. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Richard. Is there, that was on all three bullets?
Yes, sir.
Well, let me read the other two. Place for, uh, that was... Yeah. Suspend for an indefinite period the authority of Board of Commissioners and appoint Calcasieu Parish Police Jurors, the governing authority of said district. Number two, place responsibility to the day-to-day management of the district under the Division of Engineering and Public Works. And number three, authorize the Director of the Division of Engineering and Public Works to execute any documents related to the day-to-day activities of said district. Okay, so we had a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Barris?
Staff, I want y'all to keep that language, keep that handy, just in case. It's nice and concise. I like, I like how that's read, worded, so, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Five E, adopt a resolution approving cooperative endeavor agreements for the transfer of ownership for the following properties. Number one, ten oh-nine Melanie Drive in Sulphur. Number two, five oh-eight South Kent Drive in Sulphur. Number three, fifteen twenty-one Ruby Lane in Sulphur. Number four, fifteen thirty-three Ruby Lane in Sulphur. Number five, fifteen thirty-seven Ruby Lane in Sulphur. Number six, sixteen oh-five Ruby Lane in Sulphur. Number seven, twenty-three oh-nine Timber Lane Drive in Sulphur. Number eight, forty-one twelve Tracy Circle in Sulphur. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Five F, adopt ordinances approving purchases of the following properties through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Number one, eighteen thirty-one Crawford Drive, Lake Charles. Number two, six thirty-six West Legronne Street, Lake Charles. Number three, ten thirteen Van Street, Lake Charles. Number four, forty-five seventeen Sail Lane, Lake Charles. Number five, eight twenty-seven Village Lane, Lake Charles. Number six, forty-five fifty-six Shady Oak Drive in Sulphur. Got a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Andrew Pont on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Number six.
Move on six A.
Or six A, adopt a resolution approving the proposed parish budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and further authorize the parish administrator, the parish treasurer and our respective departmental directors to make changes within various budget classifications approved therein. I have a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Six B, adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget for those funds which deviate from estimated budgeted revenues, expenditures and/or fund balances. Got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Seven A, adopt a resolution approving a professional services consulting contract for emergency shelter care and treatment services for children and families in Calcasieu Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Gilry, a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Eight A, adopt a resolution approving a low-income home energy assistance program, liheep agreement. I have a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Gilry. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Eight B, adopt a resolution approving changes to Calcasieu Parish fare structure for the Calcasieu Parish pub, public transit system. Got a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Eight C, acknowledge the submitted minutes from the Calcasieu Parish Hearing Services Advisory Board for the meeting held on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Got a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Gilry. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Nine A, approve payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Nine B, adopt a resolution on proposals for a fiscal agent banking services. Staff recommends First Horizon Bank be awarded the contract. Got a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Nine C, action on bids for Crestone. Staff recommends the bids of APEC aggregate supply, DP aggregates and port aggregates be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Nine D, action on bids for janitorial supplies. Staff recommends the bids of Centos Carp, economical janitorial and paper supplies, Interboro Packaging Cart, Pyramid Paper Company, Sanitary Supply Company and Unipack Corporation be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Nine E, action on bids for sewer pumps and related parts. Staff recommends the bid of BMW pump and equipment be accepted. I'm assuming that's not Bavarian Motorworks. Got a motion by Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Barti, although, hey.
Keep it on the...
It might be. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Action on bids for collection and distribution pipes and fittings. Staff recommends the bids of Coburn Company, Coburn Supply, Ferguson Water Works and Lafayette Wind Water Works be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Nine G, adopt a resolution on qualifications for project-based vouchers. Staff request this item be deferred until the regular meeting on January eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. I got a motion to defer by Mr. Gilry, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Nine H, action on bids for water level monitoring station antennas. Staff recommends permission to readvertise. Mr. Burley has granted that, and Mr. Barris made a second. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Ten A, airport authority of Airport District Number One.
Move to appoint Mr. John Hickson.
I got a motion to appoint Mr. John Hickson by Mr. Brain and second by Mr. Markentale. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Ten B, consolidated gravity drainage district Number One. Uh, I got a motion to appoint Mr. Joseph LeBlanc by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move to appoint Mr. Todd Blanchard.
Ten C, consolidated gravity drainage district Number Two. Have a motion to appoint Mr. Todd Blanchard by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Markentale. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Number eleven's an advised item.
Move on, move.
Number fourteen, got a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Andrew Pont. We are adjourned.